Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Cal State University Northridge, which also is home of the Northridge East Neighborhood Council. And I'm president of that council. And our neighbor to the south is Northridge South.
My name's James Ashton, and I'm the president of Northridge South.
And we are going to lead you in the pledge of allegiance. If y'all please stand. This is our... Ready? Again.
(Inaudible)
Welcome, everybody. First, let me begin by welcoming everyone to the home of the Mattamakers. We are truly grateful to feature you for deciding to join us here this evening for what should be a robust and spirited conversation on the topics and issues that matter most to you. I would also like to thank each of the candidates here this evening. The job of a council member really does come down to showing up. Whether it's showing up to celebrate a new business, opening its doors on Reseda, or showing up to demonstrate solidarity with a community in crisis, so much of this job revolves around being available, being accessible, and being part of this community. This candidate forum, and the CSUN forums we have been doing here on campus in the Office of Government and Community Relations, serve a critical function of the health and equality of our democracy. It's crucial to a free and open society that good, decent people, regardless of age, gender, creed, or color, continue to choose to serve the public good. I commend each candidate for taking the courageous step to run. It is not easy, it is often not pretty, but it is always worth it. I would like to now introduce Francesca Vega, Assistant Vice President of Government and Community Relations here at CSUN. Ms. Vega has been leading government and community relations for over six years. Serves on President Harrison's extended cabinet and has nearly 15 years of higher education career experience. Our other moderator is Dr. Dean Yan Cersei. He's our newest dean here at CSUN, Dean of College of Social and Behavioral Sciences. Dean Cersei comes to CSUN having served as the associate dean in the School of Health and Human Services at Southern Connecticut State University. Please give a warm round of applause to our moderator.
It is a pleasure to be moderating this evening's program. And I want to thank all of you for being here this evening. I see many familiar faces and also some new faces here. So, welcome to CSUN, and thank you for being here. I just have a few housekeeping items that I want to go over before we start with this evening's program. First, if you've seen, you have refreshments here for all of you. Please feel free anytime during this evening's program to get something you dream. We also have some food here for you this evening. You know that this is dinner time, so again, maybe you'll spend your evening with us. Restrooms. Our restrooms are located right out of these doors. Just make a left, and then you're going to make your purse right into the building next door to us. There's a men's restroom and women's restroom. A couple of other things. This evening, we're going to have an opportunity, provide an opportunity for audience questions. So Rafael, you've just heard from, as well as Marsha, who's here representing the League of Women Voters. You can both wave your hands, Marsha and Rafael. They are going to be passing out index cards for you to write your questions on the cards. If you didn't grab one when you arrived, they will bring one over to you. Just put your hand up, and they will bring a card and a pen over to you. We will have, at the end of the program, a time for audience questions. Hal will do that. Rafael and Marsha will collect the cards from you and then pass them to myself and Dr. Cersei. We ask that if we cover something as part of our project, part of our part of the program, the moderator, please, please, we don't want anything to be repetitive. We really want to cover as much ground and provide as much information to all of you as we can this evening. I would also like to introduce our two official timekeepers for this evening. Again, also with League of Women Voters, Carmela Thompson and his chair, and thank you for being here this evening. So we are going to be very respectful of time. And I say that for all the candidates. We want to make sure, since we do have a big group up here, that everybody gets the time allotted to them to answer the questions. So please, respect each other, respect time. I also ask that all of you, let's definitely have an evening of respectful dialogue and be appreciative if you have a concern or question that you could hold off. Either ask a question on the index card, or after the program is over, there will be an opportunity to network outside of the grand salon. That being said, I will now turn it over to Dr. Cersei, and he'll begin with our program.
Francesca, good evening, everybody. Just a quick note, I did hear one phone go off. And often, we think that our phones are turned all the way down until we realize that they're not. When a phone call comes in or a text message, so take a quick second to look at your phones, make sure that they are turned off or turned down. So, thank you. All right, I just want to explain the format. The forum format for this evening will transpire as follows. We will have three separate groups, Group A, B, and C. I'm going to introduce the candidates after I go through with how the format of the evening is going to figure. And each candidate in the group will answer the same question. So again, each group has the same question. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. Each candidate will be asked at least two separate topic questions. And just another note about the time. If you do not respect our official timekeepers, I will be the stern taskmaster who will say, "Time." All right? So, just letting you know. And in addition to that, if you continue to talk, I will say, "Time," again. And so let's begin, let's honor that. Additionally, candidate opening statements will be two minutes. So for the moment, you have your opportunity to, and you'll be able to give your opening statement. Candidate closing statements will also be two minutes. After topic questions, we will ask a series of lightning round questions. Audience questions, as Francesca stated, will be after lightning round questions. And please direct your questions at a particular candidate. So not just a general question on the index cards. So indicate that the names are all up here. So indicate to whom you would like to have the question addressed. Okay? Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each audience question. All right, now here are the candidates in alphabetical order. And you can wave, smile, and hear your name called, that's fine. Scott Abrams. Carlos Amador. Jay Bieber. Annie Cho. They are all in Group A, they are all in Group A. Now, Group B, Jeff Darke. Frank Ferry. Lorraine Monquist. And Stella Malloy. And Annie's Group B. And now, Group C, Raji Rahal. Brandon Sarrio. And Josh Yeager. Now, we are about to begin. Group A, Scott Abrams will begin with the opening statement.
Hello, everybody. My name is Scott Abrams, and I'm a deep roots student. My parents met here at CSUN 50 years ago this year as I'm in graduates. And I was born and raised in the West End of the Valley. I'm raising my three children in West Hills. I've served as a high school civics teacher, and then I went to work for my congressman, Brad Sherman, growing up. And for the last 17 years, I've been Congressman Sherman's Valley Director. That means that I've been running a constituent service office that helps thousands of Valley residents every year resolve problems with government agencies. It means that I've been delving deep into the policy issues that are important to the Valley, whether it's reducing traffic by dealing with Metro, trying to get rail to support it a pass and improve the Orange Line, dealing with the environmental catastrophe with the Aliso Canyon gas flow-out, and getting more cops on the street through federal grants like the COPS program. And I try to make government more accessible. In Congressman Sherman's office, the office that I've been running, we try to bring government to the people by hosting town hall meetings, by hosting government-on-your-corner booths, like the one that I often sit at during the summer at the Warner Center Park. That's the value that I bring to government, is bringing government close to people, to be responsive, to be respectful, and to get the job done at the end of the day. To be proactive, not wait for problems, but get out there and solve them. And I bring a perspective of how to balance the hardest issues of our times, whether it's homelessness, the environmental issues we discuss, with the need for not just response from local government, but how the federal government can play a role, because I've worked for the federal government, how the state government can play a role, and how local government can be involved as well. This perspective, this work has earned me the endorsement, not just of Congressman Sherman, but also local congress members like Lou and Katie Porter, Councilman Paul Corretz for the adjacent district, Assemblywoman Kristy Smith, plus scores of local activists. I hope to earn your vote as well. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carlos Amador, also a candidate running for the seat. I'm an immigrant myself. I came here at a young age, and I faced many barriers. I started... In high school, my first job was working as a janitor. And even after graduating high school, I entered community college, transferred to Cal State, the Cal State system, Cal State Fullerton, and graduated with a bachelor's degree in human services. How many are current transfer students out there? So, I dedicated my life to change, you know, our community for a better future. I was trained as a social worker. I got my master's degree in social work at UCLA. And my wife and I have built a family here in Granada Hills. I didn't have the privilege of growing up in the district, but we chose this community for our daughter, our five-year-old daughter. So I'm involved in the Granada Hills South Labor Council, and I'm also the community engagement director for the California Immigrant Policy Center, where I have led campaigns that have changed the lives of our communities across the state and also here at the local level. So I want to be able to bring my values as a social worker, my values as a community organizer, to everything I do at City Hall, whether it's tackling corruption head-on, making sure that we're addressing the homelessness crisis in a humane and comprehensive way, assuring that we have an economy that works for everyone, especially our young students that are graduating this week from Cal State Northridge, and making sure that we have a future to live for our children and my daughter, taking action on climate, on climate action, including shutting down the Aliso Canyon gas facility. So I want to be able to bring those values and that drive and my experience to certain everyone here in the district. And I look forward to engaging with everyone of you tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jay Bieber. No relation to Justin. Just remember, I'm the good Bieber. I am the executive director of Safer Streets LA and the vice president of the North Hills West Neighborhood Council. Many of you know me as the person who successfully fought to eliminate the abusive red light camera program here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you, that never gets old. And I'm happy to say that that saved the people of the city of Los Angeles over $200 million. I've worked on parking reform here in the city because many times, that program and parking policy does not work for the people of the city. It works for the government sometimes, but not for the people. And we have a number of important things that are going to be coming out very shortly with regards to new things having to do with parking reform. I'm also somebody who worked at state level to protect our individual rights. There was a bill up in Sacramento that would have taken away your right to a trial for certain traffic, enforced traffic tickets. And we successfully fought together with groups that normally do not work with each other, like the ACLU and the Howard Jarvis Tax Payers Association, California Association of Highway Patrolmen, Teamsters, all sorts of groups, to fight back against unfair policies. And that is what my entire existence with regards to public policy is about. It's about making sure that the people who do not normally have a voice have a voice in our government. My purpose in running for this seat is to work with the community, to work together with the community, and be a voice for the community. Many times, the government does stuff that's good for the government and not for us. And that is why I am running for the seat. It's the only reason to run. And I would be honored to earn your vote. Thank you very much.
Good evening, I'm Annie Cho. I have been a resident of the district for 30 years. I first moved to North Hills and lived there for five years, and had two children there. And we moved to Porter Ranch to send my children to Castle Bay Elementary School. And I've lived in Porter Ranch for the last 25 years. My family has survived Aliso Canyon gas leak, and we are fiercely advocating that it be shut down as quickly as possible. I have had the pleasure of attending Cal State LA. I put myself through school while working two jobs. And I was also very involved in a Pan Asian criminal justice movement. It was called the Free Chersul Lee Committee. Chersul Lee was a Korean-American man who was wrongly convicted. He's a resident of the Bay Area, and he was ultimately put on death row. Pan Asian community got together, and we fought and fought and was successful in getting him out of prison and, of course, removing him from death row. I have long been interested in representing the people who do not get represented. And that is precisely why I'm running. I want to be the voice of the people who have been neglected and deprived of government representation. I have been running, I have been door-knocking since the middle of January. And perhaps I have been to some of your houses. Maybe you did not answer the doorbell. But I've been door-knocking, and it's amazing what I've been hearing. Some people have told me that they've lived in their house for 30 years, and they've never had anyone come to their door, a candidate or an elected person. That just boggles them mind. So I told them, "I am here today as a candidate, but I will continue to walk after I get elected." Because the true way for us to be engaged in government is to have open communication, to have transparency, and to have accountability. And I hope that I get a chance to tell you a little bit more about my background and to earn your support. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Darke. Little about myself. I have lived the last 33 years in the district. Just got the street from CSUN, Albo and Oroff. I grew up in Danai, so I'm a local Angelino, so this is my community. I have four children. They've all gone to public schools right nearby here. I've been on two school councils right nearby here in Northridge for a total of six years. For the past 15 and a half years, I've been a state commissioner appointed by the last two mayors of Los Angeles. Most recently, I've served on the airport commission, which in particular oversees LAX, which is a city of itself, has its own police department. It has a budget bigger than every other city in the state of Los Angeles. And I'm extremely proud that finally, in our lifetime, in the last seven years when I was overseeing LAX, we're finally transforming LAX to turn it into a world-class airport, something we could all be proud of. Connecting rail to the airport finally. We have $40 billion in modernization projects. And what's so refreshing is, we're actually doing this in Los Angeles without tax dollars, on time, in the black, and in the most innovative ways. I want to take that spirit and apply it to our basic core services in this district. I want to sit here and do that to fix our streets, our puddles, our trees, our sidewalks in particular, put in smart transportation, smart housing, and reduce homelessness. Prior to the airport, I served 10 years as the chair of the commission that protects our most vulnerable citizens in the city, our people with affordable housing. I'm very proud of that. And in my regular life, I'm a lawyer for just about 37 years, where I do complex business disputes and international work. What I mean by international work is, I help local businesses, small, medium, to expand their markets in other countries. And I help green businesses, foreign investment, into our district and into our city. And I will continue doing that as a council member. I'm very accessible. On all of the mail you've been receiving from my campaign, there's a way to contact me by email and by phone. Please do so. And that's why I'll be a council member. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Frank Ferry. I want to thank our host today, Cal State Northridge, the League of Women Voters, and the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils. It was sort of nostalgic when I walked on campus. 32 years ago, and it's hard to say that, I graduated from Cal State Northridge. So when I saw the caps and gowns walking around, it brought back some memories. I worked at the intermural's office here, and then I also worked for Dr. Whittingham, who was the athletic director. And during those four years, I learned so much about community service, public service, and outreach to youth. I remember, as a result of Cal State Northridge, going into local schools and helping those students that couldn't read and giving them tutoring. I remember organizing food drives and toy drives for disadvantaged kids. And then here, I got a governmental communications bachelor. And I'm so thankful for Cal State Northridge that got me an internship back in DC to really light the fire for public service. So when I go forward, you know, 30 years as an educator, I was Teacher of the Year at Nobel Middle School by the 31st District, PTSA. I was an educator at Valencia and Sagus High, and then I was principal of Alameda High School for 10 years, the entire time making sure that I helped kids reach their potential, that I helped parents be the very best parents they could be and support them. But I also had the second side of Cal State Northridge nurtured and got going. For 16 years, I was on the Santa Clarita City Council as a mayor and as councilman, where we were one of the safest cities in California. We built parks, we built libraries. We have 9,000 acres of open space. And so for the totality of these past 32 years, I look back, and I want to thank Cal State Northridge for giving me the experience I needed to be successful today.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dr. Lorraine Monquist. I also want to thank our hosts. I feel a special affinity for all three of our hosts tonight because I do teach here at CSUN and I've been a neighborhood council board member. I've been active with the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils. And I've also had the opportunity to register voters side by side with folks from the League of Women Voters. So thank you to all three of those organizations for hosting us here tonight. I am running to empower Los Angeles to lead on the green economy of the future, to attack our housing and homelessness crisis, and to give folks like you, ordinary people, a voice at City Hall. Now, those are some things that you're going to hear from quite a few candidates up here tonight. So here are some things you're not going to hear from any other candidates. Well, first of all, I was endorsed by the LA Times. Secondly, thank you. Secondly, I have a PhD in physics from UC Berkeley. I served as an astrophysicist at the Harvard Smithsonian Center for Astrophysics. I have had the pleasure of being a foster parent to three beautiful children. I've been a neighborhood council vice president. I designed and built a solar-powered car when I was in college and raced it across the country. And I've had the opportunity to help launch a satellite into space. And now, as I mentioned, I teach sustainability here at CSUN. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about my history here at CSUN. First of all, since you're all here, I have the privilege of being a faculty associate at the Institute for Sustainability, which I really encourage you to take it to work because this is a building which generates more energy than it uses. It reuses water, gray water for irrigation, and it employs composting toilets which regenerate our soil. I've had the opportunity to mentor a lot of students in these community projects here in the valley. My students have been interviewed on the news for their, you know, helping with traffic deaths, reducing traffic deaths for their projects in the community.
I think though you want us at CSUN, I gotta stop.
Hello, everyone. I'm Stella Malloy. I'm an Iranian immigrant from Iran. And I made this trip to my home 40 years ago. First and foremost, I would like to thank tonight's hosts. Thank you for housing us and giving us this opportunity. Cal State Northridge is extremely dear to me because every decade, I come back to this university to study something new. And my son is also an alumni from this school. So it's like being back at home. I have been a lifetime activist and a gender equity champion. And for the past two decades, I have been an executive at one of the most strategic national organizations in the country called LA Alliance for a New Economy, or L.A.I.N. I have been the only candidate in this race that has actively developed policy and won comprehensive campaigns lifting hundreds and thousands of people out of poverty, creating good, green jobs. Also, next to L.A., we have held City Hall accountable on all fronts. During my time at L.A., I have been instrumentally creating one of the largest private fundraising programs in the country. We have raised over $21 million on private funding. Hence, we're a successful organization that get a lot of funds from foundations to create real change in the city, county, state, and the country. I have two amazing children, a 22-year-old daughter who works for a general contractor and a 26-year-old son who's attending law school. I am looking forward to represent this district in many ways. It's an honor to be a public official, and we need to take this very seriously. I do hope I can earn your vote. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Raji Rahal. I play a medic shark. Just got injured with a truck in the street. Tried to fix it first, then I went to the office. Secondly... Secondly, I'm an aviator. At the age of 18, I started working. I became a pilot at the World California. Then I became a flight instructor, chief pilot, and opened a flight school soon after, over the airline. I've run a big organization. I have experience of handling large use, large departments. I have handled money on my own expense. Not anybody else has, not any organization, my own. I do charities round the year with my own money. I don't know how many people on this table can say that, but every year, round the year, I do charities with my own pocket. I do food drives, toy drives. I worked with the LAPD, I'm volunteering with them. Recently, I was awarded a recognition and a recognition award by the law enforcement. When I spoke with them, they said the issue that they were facing mainly was about homelessness. My son went to a local school, public school at Camino Real, went to USC, and then he's now a psychiatrist. He worked for UCLA, and he has a double doctorate. My daughter went to CSUN, and I saw these girls outside with their, you know, graduation countdown and everything, and I just brought the memory back. She graduated from here. She's working for the Department of Mental Health Services, and she's planning housing for the homeless every day. I see tears in her eyes every time she had doubts against an obstacle which she can't find housing. So the main issue that we're handling here is affordable housing and homelessness. Those two issues are right here at home. When I was speaking to my friends in the LAPD, they were more concerned about the mental health issue that the homelessness is facing. I've been with the people, we need the people. I'm talking about intuitive clarity, and I say, "I care, I can, and I will serve you better." Thank you.
Hello. This is... Hello, everyone. My name is Brandon Sarrio, and I'm one of the candidates for CD-12. I was just endorsed by the Daily News, Howard Jarvis Tax Payers Association. I'm born and raised in this district. My grandfather came here in 1961. I was born here in 1979. And every day, I go to over 100, 140 houses per day knocking on doors. And the reason why I do that is I want to know what's going on in each individual community. West Hills, Northridge, Granada Hills, Chatsworth, Porter Ranch, North Hills is where I live. And I want to see what is important to them. Because a lot of times, we have these politicians that think something's important, but it's not. Not to the people, not to the people that knock on the doors. And the main focus I want to have is on public safety, on homelessness, and on... It doesn't matter if you're... So I want to work with everyone. I want to fight to make sure our neighborhoods are safer. I want to solve this homeless crisis. I don't want to just put a bandaid on with bridge housing. I want to focus on mental health, public safety, and public health. And if you want to know more about me, you can go to sardroforcouncil.com, and thank you very much.
Let's save the best for last. Good evening, everyone. My name is Josh Shaker, and I'm a product in the twelfth district. I was born and raised in Granada Hills, and I spent the last decade of my life in Chatsworth. I attended local schools like Nango, Chatsworth Academy, I graduated from Shawna College of Pericory. I got my bachelor's degree in public policy down at UC San Diego, but like, there's something about that that keeps me wanting to come back. I took a job in downtown Los Angeles where I thought that I could change policy in public affairs. In my free time, I'm on the Neighborhood Council's stakeholder in Chatsworth, I'm the Secretary of the Land Use Committee. As a pet project of mine, because I lost my grandfather to Alzheimer's, I decided to become the Alzheimer's Association Ambassador for our thirtieth congressional district where I lobbied both the state and the federal government to increase lending so that no other family has to experience the hardship of dealing with a senior who is suffering from dementia and Alzheimer's. You know, why I'm running? It's very simple. I provide the community perspective, someone who weren't raised lived the same issues that you all have lived. And I think it's time we had someone who was forward-thinking and brought forth innovative solutions to the various crises that we face as a district and as a city. I'm looking to bridge the gap. I provide a youth perspective, something that the council lacks currently now down at City Hall. I'm not looking to change everything, I'm looking to modernize and fill the gaps. So I thank you all for being here, I look forward to sharing a little more about myself, and hopefully I can win a vote between now and tomorrow. So thank you very much.
Thank you, candidates. We will now begin with our first question. We will start with Group A and with candidate Abrams. The current economic and business conditions within Los Angeles City Council District Twelve reflect both the broad challenges of owning a business in Los Angeles and unique opportunities for economic growth. L.A. City Council District Twelve is home to many small and large-scale employers, including manufacturers, retail, entertainment, and hospitality. What kind of municipal tools or resources would you utilize as a council member that would both champion the needs of the local business community while increasing large-scale business development that is necessary to sustain the vitality of the region?
So I believe that a lot of the things that we need to do to help businesses are the same thing that we need to do to help residents. So when you are all stuck in traffic every day, as so many of us in the Dowey are, that affects business because employees can't get to work on time. When people can't afford to live in the communities, when our children can't afford to live in the communities that we grew up in, that means that the future employees can't live here, because that affects business. And when you worry about issues like the homelessness crisis that's coming into door splits, businesses have to wonder if they have to be a social worker to open the doors to their business because someone might be sleeping on their porch. So these are all the issues that we face and businesses face, and the city certainly has tools to deal with all of these, whether it's providing more public transportation like rail to this open pass through Measure M, that's something that the city can be encouraging and that get people out of the traffic, whether it's citing housing opportunities for people who are otherwise experiencing homelessness. And then we should be looking at the big picture. We need to be looking at reforming the gross receipts tax to make our business climate more friendly. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Amador.
Thank you. My dad works in one of the construction sites here in Chatsworth, and I talk to him every day about how his state goes, and, you know, a lot of our committee members are struggling, including my dad. I think about the importance of growing the economy. One of the points that I want to be able to emphasize and champion is making sure that we are investing and working with the workforce development programs to make sure that we're preparing the next generation of workers the most professional way to ensure that they take on those new jobs and the new generation. I also want to make sure that we're addressing the issues through the Green New Deal, and maybe we'll get to talk more about that as well, but making sure that we bring a green economy, including renewable energy, to the district. And then lastly, making sure that we're looking into the land use rules as well to make sure that local businesses are not impacted in this place. Thank you.
Thank you.
So my perspective on this is very different than many of the people up here, which is the way to help business is for the government to get out of your way, okay? The government thinks that it knows everything about your business, the people get elected, they know what you should pay people, how much time you should give them off, everything about how to run your business, and I am one of the only people that I know of who has actually run a brick-and-mortar business. I was the director of an animal hospital in New Jersey before I moved out here a number of decades ago. I know what it takes to keep the lights on, to make a payroll, and I know the burdens the government puts on businesses. I've talked to numerous business owners, in fact, one just today who is talking about having, he may have to shut down because he cannot be profitable because of all the regulations and all the burdens that the government is putting on them. We need to release our small businesses so they can thrive. That's where the money comes from, to employ people, and we need to let the businesses do what they do best.
I think one of the ways that we can foster greater economy and business conditions is to have a better sense of community pride. Let me start out by talking about small businesses, which is the backbone of our economy. It would be wonderful if we start a program where we can introduce our business next door. So let's say I have a barber shop. You know, somebody comes in, I give them a haircut, and I say, "Hey, Tom, after your haircut, can we go next door and have a cup of coffee?" And my coffee shop owner next door says, "Oh, Jane, hi. After your coffee, if you're looking for a haircut, you know, there's a barber shop next door." I think this kind of businesses looking out and promoting each other builds a sense of strong community pride, and I think this will help to foster greater involvement. And also, I want to make sure, as a businesswoman, I want to make sure that our government reviews all options that are available for medium to large businesses. Why is it that we just continue to give incentives for major projects down?
Time. This next question is for Group B. Public safety. The region faces longstanding public safety issues that require solutions to ensure the law is being enforced justly and residents are kept safe. L.A. City Council District Twelve has historically been a safe place to live, work, and raise a family, but recently crimes like burglary, car thefts, and petty crime have been reported with more frequency. With law enforcement increasingly spending more time and resources addressing the homeless population, how will you go about developing a strategy to protect property crime while protecting law enforcement in the community? Beginning with Jeff Dar.
The question sort of answers itself. This district, the biggest issue facing us is our homelessness, and we need to secure and reduce homelessness, we need to do it now, and our police are spending most of their time instead of protecting us being social workers. It's completely backwards, so what we need to do is, other than smarter employment of our patrols and improve our community local policing, if we start immediately addressing homelessness and getting people out of their tents, out of the cars, and start getting them off the streets and enforcing our laws, our police can start doing what they are supposed to be doing, the police services. It's as simple as that, folks. This is a great district, however, you've got to address our homelessness problem, and I will tell you, as a council member, I will immediately work with everybody here to come up with specific local solutions so that we can get the police back to business and get the homelessness addressed, and get them off the streets and into safer places. Thank you.
Public safety should always be the absolute number one priority of any elected official, and all resources and all our assets should go towards that until every citizen feels safe. That includes the perception of safety. We have ten thousand men and women that serve on our LAPD for four and a half million people. In CD twelve, we have five cars in totality on any given shift, and then all we do is consistently throw roadblocks and barriers. Our law enforcement can do nothing about homeless right now because of the Ninth Circuit Court decision that said until the city of L.A. builds twenty-one thousand more beds, you cannot criminalize homelessness, so you're allowed to be on sidewalks, encampments, parkways along with your belongings. So law enforcement can't do anything, and now they want to have what's called the Poverty Towing Bill, AB 516, which would allow individuals to stay in their cars and RVs out in front of our homes indefinitely. That is time.
Fighting crime is about three things. It's about prevention, intervention, and suppression. There's a lot that we can do to improve suppression, which is the usual way that we're fighting crime with our police force. I agree with some of the other candidates who said that our police force is spending too much time on homelessness. We need to have social workers doing that kind of a job and freeing up our police officers to work on these kinds of actual crimes that are happening in the district. But we also need to focus a lot more attention on things like programs for prevention and for intervention. So prevention includes things like making sure we have great high-paying jobs for everybody in the district, in the city, so that people don't turn to a life of crime, so that jobs are actually better and more available. Intervention means things like getting involved with people who've become justice-involved in some way, who have committed some petty crime, and helping them to rehabilitate and get back on their feet.
Public safety is one of the most important components in every district, and we're not unique. To sort of wrap my head around facts, I had a long meeting with the captain of Devonshire Division, and I wanted to look at numbers. I wanted to see what's happening and if I had my data correct. So I was told one of the number one issues that our community and our district is having and they complain about, we complain about, is actually speeding. It's actually streetcar racing. Those are the number one complaints around public safety and major accidents that then cause thousands of dollars of lawsuits for the city and beyond. Homelessness is a small component of our public safety issue, and to address that, we definitely need to have social services accommodate policemen. Police is doing their job. The whole component, they're doing an amazing job. Thank you.
Our next question, education. The next council member will have an opportunity to elevate the importance of education, which has become a priority issue with Measure EE on the June ballot. Measure EE funds would go to both traditional public schools and privately operated charter schools in Los Angeles Unified School District. Would you encourage your constituents to support or oppose Measure EE? If you oppose, what solutions would you propose if we were to have the measure? We'll begin with candidate Rob.
Thank you so much, Raji Rup. Again, it's a really good question. It's double-edged. My daughter went to CSUN, my son went to USC, he's now a double doctorate psychiatrist, and my daughter is handling the homeless issues, finding housing for the homeless. So I see what these great institutions have done. I am in love with these institutions, all of them. Education is top priority, but at the same time, we are not blind-driven. We have open minds. We have to see where the money is going. I see Double E needs to be reviewed. I think there are a lot of loopholes. I think there is no oversight, no knowing where this money is going to go, so I will definitely one hundred percent oppose it. I will strongly ask everyone in the community to oppose it, and I will definitely bring the measures as soon as possible to fix the loopholes in the measure. Thank you.
I'm a hundred percent against Measure EE. I have teachers on my block, and they ask me, "Why the hell did we go on strike?" You know? Why did we go on strike if we're going to raise taxes on individuals, on businesses, on... At some point, we have to ask our government to be honest with us and to audit our government and to find out where the heck our money is going. We have some of the highest sales taxes in the country. We have high gas tax mandates and fees in the country, and I know I'm thirty-nine and it's forty, but I thought the lottery was supposed to solve all of our problems. I'm getting a little sick and tired of our government and our politicians making us pay for their mistakes and for their pet projects and lying for us constantly. That's why we need political outsiders in government, that's why the Daily News endorsed me, that's why Howard Jarvis Taxpayers endorsed me, and God bless them.
Well, I oppose Measure EE. I put the simple fact that the LAUSD has not a funding problem, they have an allocation problem. The LAUSD is far too big. It is time we look at finding ways to break it up and make smaller school districts where we can actually have more funding for people instead of what we see now, which is one of the lowest funding for people. I think it's time we start advocating at state level as your city council member, that's what I'll do, then should we get more state funding for education, not just private schools, but also charter, and for colleges as well.
This next question is for Group A. Because the microphone isn't put this farther away, I'll start with Andy Cho. Here is the question. Environment sustainability. The city of Los Angeles plays an active and vital role in protecting the environment, and so does the CSUN campus. CSUN has been at the forefront of reducing carbon emissions through our Climate Action Plan, which will achieve nineteen ninety greenhouse gas level by twenty twenty and carbon neutrality by twenty forty. In L.A. City Council District Twelve, there are various environmental issues that require attention, including the Aliso Canyon Gas League, which was cited as the largest methane league in U.S. history. Do you support the permanent closure of the Aliso Canyon, and if so, why?
I support the permanent closure of Aliso Canyon as soon as possible. Before Governor Rand left office, he had an executive order that required the Aliso Canyon gas facility to be shut down in ten years. Well, I think for someone who doesn't live here, ten years may be a reasonable timeline. For those of us who live here, that's way too long. Why does it have to take that long? So I would like to have it shut down as quickly as possible, and also, I think the city council should require SoCal gas to submit annual reports, if not every six months, on the progress they're making to shut it down. Otherwise, they're going to come in the eighth or the ninth year and say, "Oh, by the way, we need another ten years." So I want to hold SoCal gas accountable, and I want the city council to play its role in making sure that it happens. So I am definitely for shutting it down as quickly as possible.
I'm in favor of shutting the facility down, but what I really want to talk about is the response to this gas blowout was unconscionable, okay? It took forever for them to report it. It took forever for the government to respond. There are people that were harmed by this that haven't been compensated, and we hear from our elected officials, especially in this district, they didn't have the legal authority to do anything about it. But let me say this, okay? That's a complete cop-out, okay? I didn't have the legal authority to get rid of the red light camera program here in Los Angeles. I didn't have the legal authority to make sure that we had parking performed in the city of Los Angeles. I didn't have the legal authority to shut down Assembly Bill 666, which would have taken away your rights. I didn't have the legal authority to change every single traffic light in the city and the state of California and make sure that there's yellow light time for logging out. I did it, and I did it as a private person, not as an elected official. Elected officials have a lot more power, and it was a complete cop-out to say they didn't have the legal authority to do anything about it.
Thank you, Carlos Amador, again. One of the priorities in my agenda when I get elected into office is to shut down Aliso Canyon Gas Facility. I will work together with community groups, with the rest of the city council, and also with the LA delegation of the state legislature. with the LA delegation of the state legislatures to push on the government at the state level and make sure that we shut it down as soon as possible. I also want to make sure that we are transitioning, having a just transition for our more environmentally-friendly city. And I want also to make sure that we're tackling the issues that are impacting the most, the people at the front lines of the environmental justice movement, whether it's putting a buffer zone of twenty-five hundred feet while oil drinking happens happening for sensitive locations, whether it's cleaning up toxic waste as well to make sure that families and communities are not impacted and are not falling sick, as well as addressing the issues of the Santa Susana Field Lab and the issue of pollution in that, the west side of the district. So I am all for environmental justice and shutting it down, so thank you.
So I also support shutting down the Aliso Canyon facility. You know, every time there's a little tremor or someone gets nosebleed up there, we're reminded of the health consequences of this or the worry of what could happen next. This is a community that's been traumatized, and we need to shut this down. Immediately in the aftermath of the gas blowout, I was on the scene. I went to the facility. I helped people and schools get air filters to meet their immediate needs at work. I went to the Community Resource Center, stood in line with everybody, and helped people who were otherwise being turned away get reimbursements. So this is an important issue we need to move forward as a community. On the issue of sustainability, though, I think there's bigger issues at play as well. We have the DWP that sees the residents and universities frankly as customers or even competitors when they're generating solar power and not as partners in greening our city. I think we need to reform that relationship and make sure that we're encouraging people, we're encouraging universities to do solar, to get our city in a green pathway forward. Thank you.
Our next question, Group E, transportation. LUSD Council District Twelve comprises a diverse array of communities with demographics constantly changing. There continues to be increased demand for connecting major regions of the district through public transit, including the San Fernando Valley, and the next council member will have to work to balance and move these priorities back forward. CSUN, working closely with LA Metro and community partners, helped to get Measure M passed with a dedicated funding source for a bus rapid transit system. The North Valley and the York City will connect the Northwest Valley to other transportation infrastructure projects and the valley we're doing. Share your plans to address transportation options for communities as the next council member. We'll begin with candidate Loy.
Los Angeles was not built for walking, biking. Los Angeles was built for us to be stuck in highways and cars. So we got to address this major crisis, we're changing systems. And I would say on a short-term solution, I would be advocating connecting bike lanes from Porter Ranch to Cal State Northridge and the train station. And I would look into models that have worked within different parts of our country and the world, where we can create greener space, where we can also have more electric cars if we have to have cars, and create a system that can work for us all while decreasing the need of cars.
Thank you. You know, the reason that most of us drive our cars everywhere around the valley and around Los Angeles is not because we love driving so much, but because the alternatives are so much less attractive than driving. We need to improve the alternatives to driving. We need to make the alternatives more enjoyable, more convenient, more fun, more accessible here in the valley. And I actually partnered with CSUN and helped get in Measure M the line item that would bring transit options here to the valley, including the bus rapid transit option. And I also want to bring innovative, new, creative forms of alternative transit to our district. So for example, we often think of CSUN as a commuter school, but forty percent of our students live within three miles of the campus, and many of them drive. I am really excited about the new kinds of transportation that are on demand that we can experiment.
Road some transportation is what initially brought me to public service at Santa Clarita. It was just jam, traffic, committed to get from the five freeway to Saugus. It was thirty-five minutes to get up the street. And that's because people in the past had denied state highway across from the fourteen to five. I came in and built a coalition called the Transportation Alliance, a federal, state, county, city, private developer money. We had over three hundred million dollars that built the Cross Valley Connector from the fourteen to the five freeway. We also built three metro link stations. We have eighty miles of bike trails off-road, so the bike riders are safe and the families are safe, as well as commuter buses that take our business and our citizens to the places of work. You cannot force people to ride a bike in LA or the San Fernando Valley. So cutting Wilbur in half and decreasing the lane capacity in half does no good.
Our district has really no alternatives to driving, and that's what's got to be changed. As an airport commissioner, I'm very proud of the flyaway. It's just an example. Actually has over a million passengers a year. So there are successful models to get people out of cars. What we need to do is, for example, CSUN, with the Measure M money, we need to have a route, but we should do rail, not buses. Learn from the Orange Line. We should use zero emission vehicles if they are human buses or whatever else we use. Probably should go down Roscoe, not Nordoff, since we're talking very local here, because it's much more industrial along Roscoe than Nordoff. That's something we haven't been talking about. And we are talking about a monorail or rail through the 405, which is so critical because that's a place you can't get to anymore for the North Valley. We need to make sure that that goes all the way to the end of the valley route, which isn't right now being talked about. We're going to have to fight to get to go through SoMar, and then we have to connect from the rest of the Northwest Valley, our district, to wherever we can that goes down the 405. And that's the model we need to follow. Thank you.
The next question is for Group C, higher education. As the next council member, you would represent one of the largest CSU's, the twenty-three-campus CSU system. CSUN is a comprehensive university that delivers award-winning undergraduate and graduate programs to nearly forty thousand students annually and counts more than three hundred and forty thousand alumni. Since its founding in nineteen fifty-eight, CSUN has made a significant and long-term economic impact on California and generating nearly one point nine billion in economic output and more than eleven thousand seven hundred jobs each year. In just a few days, it will graduate over ten thousand new graduates who will enter the workforce prepared and ready to serve. What ideas do you have for working with and engaging with CSUN? Beginning with Group C, Josh Yeager.
Well, I think this goes into my plan, to bring life science and biotech to the twelfth district. We've got one of the greatest engineering programs in the state at CSUN. It's a natural pipeline. We've got one of the largest industrial zones in the entire city, largely vacant. This industry is looking for a place to have another, biotech clusters, what they call them, like they have in San Francisco and San Diego and in Boston, Massachusetts. It's a natural fit. You can work with the Office of Finance on starting a three-year pilot program to ensure that these companies come in here, can start up as their incubator in the hatch phases, and these jobs support from the consortium level all the way to the scientists. Partying with CSUN, partnering with even the local high schools, you know, these companies want to reinvest in STEM and make sure that kids at a younger age are interested in that and science. And that's definitely the direction that I would take as councilman.
I was born and raised here. I went to Cal State Northridge, district major. For whatever reason, I decided to go into the entertainment industry. Don't ever do that, and tell your kids not to do that. But I got here early. I was the first candidate here, and as I walked back to my car to get some things that I forgot, there was a student that I walked with, and she is graduating this year. And I asked her, what is it, are you prepared for, or what do you think that needs to be done better for Cal State Northridge and for colleges in general in this district? And she says, I'm not prepared to negotiate my salary. There was no classes for me to, when I graduate, when I go to apply for a job, how much am I worth? How much can I earn? And there was, she said that there was no preparation for the future. And as I was coming back to my car, there was another young man that was graduating and asked his mom what, the same question. And she's afraid of the affordability. She's afraid that he's not going to be able to find a job because of the business climate, because of the small business taxes. Time. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, again. My name is Raji Rob. I have to agree with the format that has been followed by the educational institution because I have two sets of examples. My son, a psychiatrist. My daughter, from CSUN, working for Department of Mental Services, finding home for the homeless. So the two perfect examples I have, I've raised these children, I think the institutions have done a great job. When my daughter finished graduation, I said, look, if you want a job, you will have to spend forty-five minutes each time you go online looking for a job. So don't think you can go in twenty, fifteen minutes or ten minutes and a job will come home. It is not going to come home. You have got to go online. There are jobs out there, and you will find them. So she did that, and she spent hours looking for them, and then she finally found a job. So what I'm saying is, as a business with having accomplished management all my life, airline flights, work on, I'm the right person for the job. I will create jobs. We need to create jobs. There aren't enough jobs in the city. As a councilman, I will create a committee, and I will pursue that. Thank you very much.
Okay. We will now transition into our rapid-fire questions, and those questions will be followed by our audience questions. So thank you to those who have submitted questions. If you have a question you would like to submit, again, please raise your hand, and your cards will be picked up. Thirty seconds, candidates for each of these questions. We're going to start with Group A, with candidate Abrams. Who was the first person you ever voted for?
You know what? I believe it was Brad Sherman. And so what a joy it's been to last seventeen years to work for him as his director.
I was fortunate and lucky enough to get my citizenship in 2015. My first election was the primaries 2016, and I voted for Bernie Sanders.
Well, the first person I ever voted for was probably in high school from my school president. That's the first person that I ever voted for, so thank you.
That was a few years ago, and I don't know if it was President Jimmy Carter or US Senator Allen Cranston. I like to think that it was US Senator Allen Cranston, because right out of college, I was fortunate enough to be hired by his office and worked in Washington, DC. It was a few years ago, so I honestly do not know.
For me, it would have been nineteen seventy-six, not to give away too much. And I remember proudly voting for, I've been congressman in Danai's area, James Corman, who was around for a long time. And actually, it was the first time I ran as a delegate to a national convention. In the candidate go all the way, and I did get to the convention. So that's my background.
President Reagan in his second presidential campaign.
The first presidential election I voted in, I voted for Bob Dole, and my politics have changed quite a bit since then. It's been a really interesting journey. And yes, I do think differently now.
I remember who I voted for first, and I would age myself if I tell you, but I'm going to share with you who I was the most proud to vote for, and that was Hillary Clinton.
First person I ever voted for, I think, was John Kerry, but now my politics has changed. For president last time, it was Donald Trump, and for this last election, it was Roxanne Beck-Perot, who was an amazing woman. She almost won the LAGOP championship, and she just left, but she was just, thank you.
I'll age myself. I think the first time I voted was 2012, and I think it was a bit wrong, but I remember correctly.
All right. Thank you. Next question, we're going to keep it right there, because you pass the microphone down to my left, so we can just start passing it down to the right. We'll start with Josh Yeager. Lightning round, still rapid-fire. Who would you rename a street after in the valley?
Probably my great-grandfather Chuck Yeager. American war hero, definitely deserves something out here in this area as well, with that reserve.
I would definitely name it after my grandfather, who served in Korea, opened a painting business, painted houses all over the San Fernando Valley, Frank Dunn's painting. He was the hardest working man I've ever met in my life. He supported his family painting houses in a hundred-degree weather. I miss him so much, and I would definitely name a street after Frank Dunn because he was a respectful and hard-working man. Thank you.
My dad was, he passed away a couple of years ago. Great man, police officer. He was trained by DEA, placed him in the country, put his life on line. He was always in danger, our family was in danger all the time. He was trained by the LAPD. I love that guy. He was humble, down-to-earth. If I get an opportunity, I would put his name on the street.
If I ever had this opportunity, I would name a street after my mentor in life, my aunt Amara Tumani, who had to immigrate to three different countries, learn different languages. She ended up coming to Los Angeles with hard work. She was an executive in the city of LA, and she retired when she got Parkinson's, and she's no longer with us. But every day of my life, especially during this journey, I do think of her and how proud she will be. Thank you.
Well, honestly, I am a little bit tired of politicians who like to name things after themselves or their families or the big money, the people in the community. When I think about who I would name a street after, I think about people like some of my students who have struggled so hard to get to college and then struggled so hard to get through college and now, you know, have managed to graduate and are going off to fight amazing battles like, there's one of my students, Janet Banzmeiler, who is just now an amazing fighter for environmental justice in the valley, and I would want to name a street after her.
It's interesting, because this name popped in my head, and I haven't thought of it for a long time. That's Mario Machado. And he's a TV personality back in the seventies, eighties, but he brought AYSO Soccer to the San Fernando Valley at Pettipark Region Eight. And I think about over those last forty years, the explosion for all the kids and families that have come from AYSO Soccer. I thought, man, I don't know if the guy's alive still, but he deserves a street because it's been an amazing experience.
I think the most important thing to do would be to open up to the community and have a contest of speech, recognize the most important unsung herald. There's so many people who are tireless volunteers who have made such a difference, but they never get recognized. We should find the perfect example for everyone else to aspire to who just doesn't get recognized. I can't tell you who that is because that's the whole point of what we need to open up to the community, and that's what I would do, and I would do it in a heartbeat.
I would name it after my mom, the late Angela Cho. I came here with my family as an immigrant from South Korea. For my parents, the most important thing was for my three brothers and I to get good education in the United States. My mom unfortunately died of brain aneurysm when she was only fifty-seven, and she did not get to see the fruits of her hard labor. My brother afterwards was able to pursue a career in medicine, and so her goal of educating us was achieved, so I would name it after my mom. So I would name it after my mom.
Well, with all due respect to some of the people here who I'm sure love their family members, this is not a hit on them. I would never think that it's appropriate for somebody to name a public facility after their own family member. And also whether it's a bandstand or a park or anything else like that. But who I would think about is the people that built this valley. And one name stands out. If you know anything about architecture here, the single-family homes that were built here by Palmer and Fressel, they're wonderful, wonderful architects. And a lot of us have the benefit of living in their homes. And that's who are unsung heroes here in San Francisco.
I also concur with some of the candidates. It is difficult to think about naming after a family member. I also want to take the input from the public. But to really answer the question, my personal response would be to include the name of Reverend James Lawson Jr. He's 91 years old now. He's one of the architects of the civil rights movement. Trained John Lewis and Diane Nash. Taught Martin Luther King, the teachings of nonviolent direct action. He taught in this school as well.
There's a couple of great Valley heroes that I think about. Sally Ride, with my daughter, for recently. She read her history and was so proud of her service and the fact that she had a Valley connection. As a UCLA student, I'll also say I love that John was a resident here in the Valley. And his pyramid of success is still a lesson for all of us to learn from.
We will now have our last of the lightning round questions and then we'll transition into audience questions. Our final lightning round question. Where is the first place you would take a first-time visitor to the San Fernando Valley? And let's go ahead and start with candidate Dar. And we'll go, candidate Dar, we'll go to your left and then we'll come back up to, towards our moderator table. Candidate Dar.
Getting a mic is on. Great question. Maybe it helps a push for those who remember the old glory days. I think I would take them to one of our really incredible public spaces to sit here and see the beauty and openness of the North Valley. It would be possibly Sony Point area probably, possibly out in the west, southern part of the Valley. I'm trying to keep it more in the district. But I think that would be the thing I would take them to. We have just so many incredible places to share and people see it that much as a commercial city.
I grew up in the Sunshine Range Moncaus. It was built in 1895 when the entire valley was lemons and oranges. So there's some great lookups there. But my dad took my family and us all the way up to the Chatsworth Mountains, through all the movie ranches, climbing the rocks. I mean, I don't think there's a more beautiful place to experience, but also to look out at the valley, so.
Well, obviously, I'm incredibly biased, but I always take people to CSUN. I love CSUN. And there's so much going on here. There's so many amazing programs that we have here. I've done so many sustainability tours for folks, even from the neighborhood, who don't realize all the things we're doing here on campus. I've had the privilege of bringing thousands of K-12 students from across the valley to CSUN for hands-on experiences and for tours of our sustainability center and all the things that we're doing on our campus, the food garden and water capture and so much more.
There are so many places in the Valley and in our district that I have fond memories of and I'm very proud of, including this institution. But the place that comes to mind that's very special to me is a place that I helped create 23 years ago, a private soccer school. I found the land as a young mom whose four-year-old son wanted to play soccer. I found a donor and I leased the land, a federal land, for 50 years. It's in Encino and hundreds of kids are going there to play. So I'm very proud of that.
I think all of the Valley is amazing. If I had to take someone around, I'd like to have them sit with me, give them a drive around, go through the malls, go through the streets, go through the freeways. Every aspect of every corner of the Valley is beautiful. You can't just take them one place and don't have them an idea of what we represent, what we have. So of course, the Chatsworth, the North Ridge, the Grana Hills, all the areas, including Porter Ranch and North, all of the 12th district has amazing areas that I would love to show them around and drive them around and have a part of. Thank you.
Outside of the district, probably the San Fernando Mission. I love that place. It's, I'm a history major and I'm a history nerd. I just love it. Inside the district, O'Melveny Park, because I take my dog there almost every weekend. It's beautiful and it's, you know, it's what the CD 12 is about, is the open spaces, the beauty of the environment and protecting our environment. And then maybe Shepherd's, that's up the hills where I go. Thank you.
Well, I'd have to say anywhere in Chatsworth, being that I've lived there the past decade. Our historical society there has done a great job in preserving what has made Chatsworth kind of the last frontier of the city. It's the most unique place in the entire, in the entire city. With Free Carina Forest up to San Susann Pass Trail, you know, you can go, you know, take the last and down the historic olive trees. Chatsworth has done a great job of preserving what is truly remarkable for the North West San Fernando Valley.
Got it. Thank you. I would take them to the ET Park. You know where that is? If that's not, yeah, I would take them there. Everybody knows ET and that's always a fun place.
Yeah, I think I would go up to the San Susann Pass Sony Point area. I don't know if you know this, but on a, on a full moon, if you go up there, you can actually see the sunset and the moon rise at the same time. That is something that I've done with my wife and I would love to share with other people. And I'd love to share with all of you as well. This is a really wonderful experience. So thank you.
I really love the sights from ET Park. That's really beautiful just seeing the whole valley. You can see on that clear sky all the way to downtown, which is a pretty spectacular look. I also like taking people to Pettit Park in Grana Hills, which is just a walking distance from our home. Especially when there is a Friday night, families playing in the cricket ground, corn in the cob, enjoying that. It's just really, really special.
So maybe we could just show the Soraya. Went there the other night, it was a very good venue. And maybe a sandwich at Brett's Deli along the way. But my six-year-old son would not let me leave your house and Universal Studios. So that's where I'm going.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We are now going to transition into the audience questions. It's still open. We have a lot of index cards here, but we're still open to view. Still want to submit one. And again, direct your questions specifically to one of the candidates. This one is directed to Jay Beaver. As a single councilperson, how can you make significant change?
Oh, that's a great question. I get asked this question all the time. You know, my philosophy as a council member is not to be the boss of the district. So as a single person, you can actually make change. I was able to do that with the Red Light Capital Program. I was able to do that with Park and Reform. I was able to do that with changing the traffic lights in the entire state. But I would not be, it would not be me going to City Hall. It would be us going to City Hall. When was the last time a council member came to you and asked you for your help in changing city policy? That would be the model that I would use. When they want to impose something on us, when they want to change something, when they don't want to fix something that needs to be fixed, I would bring the community together and I, we would go to City Hall and we would make change together. That would be my model. That's how you get it done is just one person. Because it's not just one person. It's all of us making the change.
This question is for candidate Barry. Where do you stand on marijuana dispensaries and access to cannabis, especially given Santa Clarita does not have any?
I'll be honest with you. I was with my son earlier today and I'm like, I don't care. I'm going to answer it. I mean, obviously, I respect California law. I was the one up in Santa Clarita, first person in the state and the first one nationwide that did not allow dispensaries in Santa Clarita. 30 years as an educator, I have never seen marijuana benefit a student and their potential. And I've only seen marijuana as well as alcohol for young people driving back. And so when it comes to marijuana dispensaries, I just don't think, you know, I'm not going to sit there and act as an adult, other adults saying, hey, you know, you can smoke weed or not. But for me personally, I would minimize your dispensaries as much as possible because access, especially to our youth in high school, in college, they'll just never reach their potential. And I just think that there are other ways to make it, to make it viable.
The next question is directed to Randy Sario. Do you support LA as a sanctuary city?
No, I don't. And I'm 100%, 100% against sanctuary cities, 100% against sanctuary state. I ran for state senate in 2018 against SB 54, Kevin DeLeon. My grandfather came here from Finland and he waited five years in Finland. My dad was born there. And he had to wait in line and he came here and then he learned the language and got a, became a successful construction worker, worked hard. And I think if the first act you do when you come to a country is break the laws of that country, then that says something about you. And so I support enforcing our immigration laws 100%. Thank you.
Next question is for candidate Cho. As CD 12 council member, what will you do to increase citizen involvement in city government?
I want to reach out to everyone, especially those that do not belong to our organization. Many small business owners do not have time to participate in trade organizations or neighborhood councils or HOAs and whatnot. So I want to make sure that I reach out to those that are not associated or affiliated with an entity. And I also want to make sure that I continue to walk, as I mentioned earlier, because there's nothing like hearing directly from the constituents, the state of affairs on their block, on their street. And I was just really, really shocked that even in 2019, in CD 12, there are streets that do not have street lights. I'm not talking about missing light bulbs, but we do not have street lights. So we need to continue to get the residents involved in our conversations and in our dialogues. I am not going to be stuck at City Hall or behind my desk at field office.
This next question is for Raji Robb. What is your position regarding contributions to city council members from developers? And as a follow-up, have you taken developer money?
Okay, I was the only candidate yesterday. I think the day before yesterday, at the City Hall, there was a meeting. I think all the candidates were invited to talk about contributions to developers. Nobody was there. I was there and there were other people making comments. So totally against it, there should be a boundary line drawn between politics and money. Because as long as money keeps getting involved in politics, we will have corruption, we will have problems, and we will always be having such dialogue. So once we put a ban on between power and politics and money, developers to have no business involving themselves with politicians and contributors because there is always a payback, there's always a return, there's always some exchange and there's always some, you know, expectations in return. So I'm against it. And that's how I voice my concern at the top of it.
This question is for candidate Abrams. How would you work with the community around transit issues and transit-oriented communities, given many communities do not want to see increased transit?
Well, I work with them the way I have been over a long time, which is by building consensus. You know what? It's important that I go out in the community, that the council members are responsive to the community. That's why I've been attending neighborhood council meetings, Kiwanis Clubs, chambers for so many years. It's important to get that community perspective. And ultimately, we can come to consensus. I think there's consensus around rail from this of over the past. Now we need to get the best method for that. But we have to think about ways that we're improving the Orange Line, which is, you know, as someone who's been on the Orange Line and have talked to writers on the Orange Line, there's consensus there that we can speed up the time from point A to point B across the valley. And that's moving forward. So there's absolutely ways to get consensus on this. And I think people know that on transit issues, it's a quality of life issue. It's a matter of whether we're going to spend all our time in traffic or whether we're going to get past this. And so I think people are hungry for solutions and I'm eager to work with the community to provide those solutions.
This next question is for Josh Yeager. The metropolitan area is facing a very serious public health crisis related to homelessness, typhus, TB, and plague. If you become a council member, what will you do to address this potential catastrophe?
Well, so I'm proud to say that I'm the only candidate on this stage that has an actual concrete plan. Received input from over 250 Chatsworth residents. We've identified a site. It's away from homes and schools and religious institutions, which is usually the main concern of homeowners. It's on the corner of Nordoff and Canoga. It's a very much underutilized metro parking lot where we built supportive temporary bridge housing to get individuals off the streets. Because as you mentioned, this is now not just the housing crisis, it's a public health emergency. Where's the typhus? They aren't just solely, in cannabis, they travel, you know, rat security typhus. So we have to look at a comprehensive way to address housing, people who are living on the streets. Because as I've said many times in many other forums, I can't start repairing sidewalks until I get those living on, living, those living on the streets, off the streets. And I've already been in partnership with Men in the Valley. They both agreed to run programs, whether it's drug treatment, physical, mental health clinics. It's going to be a full campaign.
Next question is for candidate Lundquist. While affordable housing is an important issue in the city, fewer talking about homeownership, what will you do to give more Angelenos an opportunity to own homes? How will you use your authority over land use to bring back the starter home?
That's such a great question. There are, you know, part of what's happening in this city is that so many of our young people, my students, my graduates, for example, even when they get good jobs coming out of college, they can't afford to live in the city. They're being priced out of the neighborhoods where they grew up. They're being priced out of homeownership even later on in life. So part of what I would like to do is to create lots of different sizes and shapes and kinds of housing. There are so many different options on the market right now that are not really allowed in Los Angeles due to permitting reasons right now. So for example, tiny homes are a fantastic, sustainable and enjoyable way to live for a lot of people, but are not an option here in Los Angeles because of permitting issues. We need to have more creative, different forms of homes.
The next question is for Jeff Dar. What are your plans for the role of CD 12 in the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments?
I'm sorry, I can't answer the question.
What are your plans for the role of CD 12 in the San Fernando Valley Council of Governments?
Well, let me address that in a couple of different ways. First of all, as I shared with everyone, I was very honored to have been a city commissioner for 50 and a half years in CD 12. We have half the numbers of commissioners, which are very important roles in the city from CD 12. So council member who is to advocate and push the mayor to have more representation than our city government from CD 12. We have right now literally 50% less than the average. Just completely wrong. And the fact that I've been one of the few, we have, I think, five right now city commissioners in CD 12 subservient. That's one thing. Second, we need to collaborate. CD 12 isn't in a vacuum. And one of the things I will do is I will collaborate with the other council members in order to sit here and do things such as have somebody, which would be myself, with a business background on the council, but get others to sit here, let's reexamine our culture bureaucracy and reform our city government anew and figure out what works and keep it and make it work better and get rid of the stuff that doesn't work.
Candidate Malleyan. Today's Bike to Work Day. What are your priorities for addressing fatalities due to the auto noise? How would you deal with traffic issues?
Traffic issues are complicated. It exists in every district. I feel it's twofold. I think one part of this question is about how do we avoid accidents? How do we... I think one part of this question is about how do we avoid accidents, how do we take care of our constituents, creating safe bike lanes, creating more police presence for less speeding. And then the next part of it is, how can we create more funding to create more bike lanes and more enforcement? And I think that will be around taxing. Taxing companies like Verizon, taxing companies like trucking companies who are using our roads and impacting them. So hence, they should pay more taxes so that we can have more funding to address this crisis. Thank you.
Final audience question, directed to Carlos Amador. I'm a CSAT student who is a proud transgender, non-binary immigrant of color living in the San Fernando Valley. What are you planning to do about racial and gender justice with and for the local LGBTQ communities of color?
Thank you, thank you for that question. One of the things that I think is crucially important is to make sure that we expand protections for LGBTQ community members, especially transgender community members, in every sector of society in the city, but especially in the workplace. One of the things that I was proud to be part of and support is the passage of the Civil Human Rights Ordinance at the city council level, which now will go into effect. We want to make sure that it has the necessary resources to ensure that we're enforcing the local, the state discrimination laws at the local level, and making sure that we're doing the necessary outreach to community members to know their rights and ensure that they are, they know their rights at the workplace as well. So I am proud to have the support of LGBTQ community members and leaders here in L.A. like Pampis and Salcedo and Dennis Sebuktierez, who are really leaders, some really inspirational friends of mine as well.
We are now going to proceed to closing statements. I want to remind the candidates that they are limited to two minutes each. We will begin with Lou Day and Scott Abrams.
Well, thank you CSAT for hosting us. Thank you all for coming out tonight. You know, you had a lot of choices tonight, and I appreciate that you cared enough about your community, so hats off to you. You know, as a former civics teacher, I told all my students about the importance of voting and participating, and you're doing that here, and with warnings that very few people will vote in this election. It's heartening to see a full house tonight, and thank you. So please tell your friends, get the word out, we need to have a choice that's representative of the community, and that means the community turns out to vote. I grew up here in the community, I care about it deeply. I have fond memories going to the old Albrook Hall and getting orange Julius, being going to the backyard, swim parties in Northridge. These are the best memories I have. That's why I love living here, and why I love serving here, because I care about this community. And that's why, over the last seventeen years, I've run an office to provide solutions for Valley residents, to cut through bureaucratic red tape when businesses are saying that the government's getting on their back and they're asking for needless forms. Call them up, call up the agencies and get progress made. When a veteran is about to get evicted from his home because the VA is screwed up and hasn't sent him that check that month, I'm on the phone resolving that problem for people. And that's what I think people expect from a council member, especially a local government, someone who's going to fight for them every day, who's going to resolve problems, not going to wait for problems to come to them, but to provide that kind of concierge service to say, I noticed the pothole, my staff noticed the pothole, you don't need to call 311, I'm out there looking for those problems, let's solve them proactively together. So with that, I look forward to the opportunity to serve you. Please check out my website, scottabramsforcouncil.com. And I want to continue to make the Valley the great place that we love and make sure that for the future, we're protecting it for the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me here tonight and for hearing my ideas and vision to serve this district. As I mentioned, I am trying to work together and I want to make sure that we work together to tackle the most pressing issues in our communities. I myself have voluntarily decided not to accept any donations from developers or corporations. Now I want to make sure I'm championing those issues of getting rid of corruption at city hall by putting a ban on developer incorporation contributions to city officials. I also want to make sure that we work together to address the homelessness crisis, including starting and championing the efforts to provide the supportive housing units that we pledged as a city council and that District 12 has not even broken ground. I want to make sure that we're making an economy that works for everyone, whether it's the single mother who can't afford to pay rent because struggling to keep a job, or the community member who is integrated back into society after serving time. So I want to make sure that we, I represent everyone. One of the experiences I had, just as we were knocking on doors, as I was knocking on doors, getting petitions, signatures for, for the Valley, for the Valley. I spoke with a community member, a Filipino man, who, after sharing my story, he said, well, I can't help you because I'm just an immigrant. And I told him, I'm just an immigrant too. And while he wasn't able, he was not able to sign my petition because he was not a citizen and a registered voter, I told him and I made a commitment that I'm here to support and represent everyone in the district. So I will do so with the skills that I have as a social worker, as a community organizer, as an advocate, to make sure that we work and we fight every bit as hard as everyone does in this room to make the San Fernando Valley a place everyone can call home. So you can visit my website at www.carlosforla.com, and I hope to come with your support on June 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming out tonight. You know, many of us, or our family members, came here to pursue the California dream. But unfortunately, that dream is being destroyed. It's being destroyed because we keep electing the same people over and over and over again, whether it's the staffer for this, or the commissioner for that, or whether it's somebody that has been in the pockets of all of the special interests. We need change in our city government, and if you want something different, you have to vote for somebody different. I am running for city council to be that difference. We need somebody who is going to be a voice for the people of this city, not the special interests, not the same old, same old. If you want, if you like the status quo, there's plenty of people to vote for other than me. But if you want something different, you have to vote for somebody who is not one of the insiders. And whether it's the homeless prices, which the city is spending $500,000 per unit instead of, compared to the H Health Care Foundation that can renovate a building for $70,000 per unit, or whether it's the soul-sucking traffic that the city's policy is to make worse by taking away car lanes, by resynchronizing traffic lanes so you hit more red lights, not fewer red lights, this is actually their policy. This is weapon opposing us. You have to look at city government as a benefit to the people. And if you look at it and you ask the question, what public policy, how is the public being served by this? That's how you make decisions, not by determining what's best for you, what's best for your buddies, what's best for the special interests. There is too much power concentrated in too few hands. That's why when, when I get elected, it's all of us getting elected. That's why we can make a difference if we band together and we don't vote for the same old, same old thing. Thank you very much.
I want to ask for your vote, because I am the one who's going to bring about change in CD 12. I am not owned by anyone, and I do not owe anybody anything. I had the good fortune of working for U.S. Senator Allen Cranston right out of college, so I have federal work experience. I also had the pleasure of working for Speaker Pro Tem Assemblyman Mike Bruce. I have state government experience. I also served on the Modern Tower Ward under James Hahn after I get, I received the unanimous confirmation by the city council. So I also know how the city government works and how it doesn't work. We have to have the county do its share in solving some of our problems. We have to have better collaboration with different levels of government and different elective officials. I want to make sure that everyone in this district is represented, and I want to make sure that I am their voice and not the voice of just one percent. And as I mentioned to you, I will continue to walk. So when I get to your door, I hope that you do engage in a conversation with me for a minute or two, because I think that's where we get the dialogue going. That's where we start getting engaged. We cannot change if we ourselves are not changing. So I want to urge you to tell all your neighbors to vote, and even tell strangers, if they have not registered to vote yet, they can still do it. We have to get engaged. I am, in addition to the work experience I've shared with you, I have met the challenges of childcare and eldercare simultaneously. And as our parents live longer and longer, they're not always healthy. So we have to take care of ourselves and our families. And another thing, affordable housing and homelessness is a lot closer to us than we think. My twenty-eight-year-old son, who's a high school teacher, he has a little bit of student loans, so he's not able to live on his own. So he's moved in with my husband and me. As I went door-knocking, I found many households that have multi-generation arrangements.
Hi, Jeff Dar. Let me share with you something I've done and what I will do as a council member for you. When I was with the Housing Department, I was chair for ten years of mission dealing with affordable housing. I got there, it was so dysfunctional, nothing was working. Everything was inconsistent with ordinance. We had regulations that had not been looked at in thirty years, couldn't even find them. So I decided I either resign, because it would be embarrassing one day, or I reduce everything. So I formed a work group that then every other week, and over six and a half years, reviewed every regulation, every policy and procedure, and redid them all, even deleted seven regulations. No one will ever tell you you do that in city government. And the reason I'm sharing this was, it took six and a half years, every other week, and we also had regulations that were needed. I want to take that same experience and apply it to our city government, including homeless through council operations. And there will be a couple people, I already know who they are in the city council, who will work with me on this. I tried to get three different mayors to do this, it's a lot of work. People don't like to change the status quo. We need to do it, we need to change the culture of bureaucracy of our city. We need to make this city, it doesn't take forever for our small businesses to give to anything. We need to sit here and change the way we can build affordable housing and reduce homelessness. We don't have pioneers, and it's cultural, it's bureaucratic, we don't need to cut corners, we need to make our government smarter. For example, at the airport, we're doing a people mover project. We're going to dedicate for $4.9 billion, $700 million to our small businesses with an emphasis on disabled pet businesses. This type of approach we need to take in our city, and it's going to take a lot of hard work. I will do that for you, and I will put you first, I will not put myself as part of the equation at all. I hope I can hear your vote, Jeff Dar.
Time.
Thank you.
At the very beginning tonight of the forum, Rafael came up, he's our next council member, he needs to show up. I'm challenging each and every one of you, don't take my word for it, please go and research my sixteen years on the city council. I showed up and made sure that we were number one safe city in California. I showed up and we were recognized as the most business-friendly city in Los Angeles County. I showed up and we have nine thousand acres of open space in public land. I showed up and actively went after teen issues of depression and alcohol and drugs. I showed up and helped do everything I could for senior citizens so they were isolated in their homes and had transportation and meals on wheels. I showed up, and that's one of the reasons that tonight I'm a little frustrated, and I'm candidly, I think it was Rafael's thing that did it. One of our candidates, John Lee, fourteen years worked in Councilman Englander's office. Five forums, he's not showed up. He's not been here to look you in the eye, to listen, and to give you his opinion and where he stands on these hard issues. I find that disrespectful, I find that dismissive of you, the voter. And what I can guarantee you is, that if you honor me with your vote, June 4th, I will show up on homeless, I will show up on Eliso Canyon, I will show up for public safety. I guarantee that I have the experience, the leadership, the compassion, but more importantly, the reputation and the proof that the hardest issues, I will show up for you in CD 12. Please honor me with your vote on June 4th.
You know, again, my name is Doctor Lauren Lundquist, and my candidacy started out as a grassroots candidacy. There are many folks up here who have deep ties to existing political power, and they will be, they were expected to be the front runners. But some things have been happening, things are changing. It's just beginning to start, but our politics are changing all around us. We saw in the 2018 midterms that all of a sudden people from different walks of life, women, people of color, people from different backgrounds who weren't career politicians, were elected to office and have been here in our district, people like Assemblymember Misty Smith and Congresswoman Katie Hill. We are sitting up, people all over the country are sitting up and taking notice of politics and digging in and getting to work in ways that really haven't happened before. And those people are coming out for my candidacy, which is why my candidate, I'm now considered to be one of the front runners. So why are people coming out for me specifically among all these fifteen candidates? Well, it's because I'm the one who's been there in the community, fighting with them on the ground. So a lot of folks talked about shutting down Eliso Canyon, but I am the only candidate up here who's been there as boots on the ground with the community, standing with the community, fighting to shut down the facility from the very beginning, back when the elected leaders didn't even acknowledge that it was a problem. We were actually fighting fracking at the wells there in Eliso Canyon before the blowout even happened. On homelessness, I am someone who's been working on homelessness as a co-chair of the homelessness committee for my neighborhood council, as a founding member of the West Valley Neighborhood Alliance on homelessness, fighting to bring solutions to homelessness here to the West Valley. I have been an educator, working with hundreds of K-12 teachers throughout the valley and bringing money to those schools.
Time.
Thank you.
I have been a fighter all my life. And the past twenty years of my life, I have created a major impact in the city of Los Angeles and for working families. I am not apologetic for my democratic views and philosophy. I believe in responsible government with regulation. I also am very much pro-business. It's not one or the other. I just believe in responsible business. The major ideas around my platform that I'm going to really fight for and I'm developing comprehensive policies around is homelessness, innovating affordable housing methods, and shutting down Eliso Canyon. But one thing that's very interesting to me today, one thing that never came up, was gender equity. One million nine hundred fifteen thousand women are in the city of Los Angeles. We have two women on Los Angeles City Council. That's not acceptable, and we're going to change that. Since 1953, we haven't had a woman leading our district. We're going to change that. And under my watch, when I get to city council, there is not going to be secret sexual harassment, settlements, to shut down us women. On that note, we have great people on this panel. Amazing people are in this race. One thing I want you to think about is who is going to have the capacity to win against John Lee. That candidate is me. I'm a gender equity champion, I have major progressive labor endorsements, that will mean the strongest GOTV program. I do hope I will earn your vote and will have the opportunity to know one another better. Thank you.
Hello, everybody again, Raji Robb. I think we are a very educated society. I think we are a nation of laws, and I don't think John Lee has a chance. Because, because it has been all over what has happened in the past. Okay, you do something wrong, you pay with your pocket, you settle the issue, you don't pay with the money of the taxpayers to settle the issue. So from that perspective, I believe that we are well-educated people. And women empowerment is what I believe in. I have a daughter, I love her very much, and I want her to succeed in life, and I don't want anything like that to happen to her friends or anybody in this community. I'm a father-like figure, and I will stop that incident. Secondly, I believe that what we need to have is a person who is being involved before this election. My name has been in the community before this election. I've been working with the community before this election. I've been working with the law enforcement before this election. I've been going door-to-door, helping homeless people, feeding the people who need help. I've been going out doing drive-throughs at the Christmas time, I've been going out reaching out mentor, it's any kind of help, anybody, I've had authors to do that before this election. So you have to... So you have to see, really look at the past, who can do what. I accomplished high school airline, I've been an aviator all my life, I've found happiness in helping people. So we don't need any rocket science in getting to the city council. We need the people with the heart, we need somebody who can approach people, who can feel people, who can solve the problems. My family is involved in solving homelessness. My son is a psychiatrist, like I said, and my daughter, I hear those homeless issues every day. I think I bring more to the table. I think I can dedicate my life more humanly and more possibly. I care, I can, and I will serve you better. Thank you.
If you're a Republican, you have a choice. Either John Lee, who will lose this election, or someone like me, who is a political outsider that was endorsed by the L.A. Daily News, that doesn't back down from having meetings with very important people in the district who threaten you and your girlfriend and will not back down from those challenges. I was born and raised in this district, and the reason why I said my grandfather, I would name it after him, is because he was one of the people that built this area. He was a painter, just a house painter. And I used to work with him when I was twelve, thirteen, fourteen years old in a hundred-degree weather in the San Fernando Valley. So that's why I would name a street after my grandfather, and he fought in the Korean War. When I decided to run for city council, I thought to myself, what has the city council been focusing on? And I had my car stolen a couple Christmases ago. The single mother across the street had her door kicked in in the middle of the night. She moved out of the district, and she's been in the district for about ten, fifteen years. And then right around the corner from my house was a major Colombian drug ring that was busted, just right around the corner from my house. And this is my one neighborhood. This is my one area. And so when I think about the people that are leading us and the focus that they have about banning plastic straws or attacking NRA, it really frustrates me. I'm not running to be the king of CD12. I'm not running because I think, I think everyone in here, every business owner, every individual, love who you want to love, raise your business however you want to, do your business, and we need to get more personal freedoms back for our community. Thank you. And political dynasties need to end now.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for taking your time to come here tonight. My name is Josh Shader, and I will be the first to tell you I am not the most conventional candidate. I am a twenty-six-year-old young man who broke in the district and lived the same issues that you all have lived at least for the last twenty-six years. But I think it's important that I at least explain my family background so you can understand kind of the family of which I come from, aside from Chup. I have, you know, I may not have some of the titles that some of my opponents have, but there are a few titles that I am extremely proud of. I am the oldest grandson of all house survivors, and I am the oldest grandson of an immigrant from Mexico City, both who came to this country with nothing, truly lived the American dream, had a market on Fifth and Bixwell downtown, bought a home in Hollywood, raised three beautiful children. My aunt's in proud, my mom also. You know, it was their love of the community, their love of family, as well as their work ethic. That's what gave top me, and that's what I'm hoping to bring to the council office if elected. But you know, as I've canvassed the neighborhoods, I've kind of heard one central theme, that's been partnership. For too long, the average taxpayer, the average homeowner has not had the voice heard. And they're looking for someone that'll go into a partnership and go in with them, and that is what I am promising to you all today, and that's what I promise to everyone and every single door that I knock on. So I hope between now and June 4th, I'll earn your vote. You go to joshshader.com, and I'm more than happy to give you my cellphone or my email. Call me or email me anytime, and thank you again for all of attending this forum.
On behalf of CSUN and Office of Government and Community Relations, thank you to our eleven candidates. I can give a little... Thank you, moderator, Dr. Jan Sersi. My pleasure to bring up for our closing remarks, Mr. Jill Banks-Barr.
Thank you very much, Francesca. Thank you all for coming out tonight. This was a really interesting and certainly robust candidates for. And there are really some incredible candidates here. And I think those of you who live in the 12th City Council District are very fortunate that you have the choices that you do. I wanted to tell you, some of you may not know, although I see a lot of neighborhood council people here, I'm glad to see you here, that I'm the founder and chair of the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils. And we represent all of the neighborhood councils in the San Fernando Valley, and there are thirty-four of them, which is really one-third of all the neighborhood councils in the city. We're the oldest and the largest neighborhood council alliance in the city. I'd like to say to legal women voters and to Rafael, who I don't see right now, thank you very much for asking the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils to partner with you in putting this forum on, because it's so important. And it really is a mission of the Valley Alliance of Neighborhood Councils to educate the community, not just what's going on in their own community, but the city as well. So I think Rafael, the legal women voters, you really, it was great what you did tonight to have this before. And I'd like to speak to the candidates for a minute. Of course, one of these people will be the city council member. And congratulations. For those of you who are not going to win, I would like to urge you to stay in touch with the community, because you have great ideas and you're obviously very bright. And I think that you should stay engaged. Because you don't win, that's not a reason to step back. Keep fighting for what's right, making the city better, and stay in public service, because public service is really a calling. And it's, for me, it's the highest calling of all. So I urge you to stay in touch. Thank you, Frances.
If you would like to talk to any of the candidates, please, we ask you to move outside and have a safe trip home. Thank you.